The Pledge of Legions, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being just for all.
If you'd call the roll, please.
Will Elder?
Will Elder?
Here.
Stacey Dawson?
Here.
Mark Hickman?
Here.
Ryan Williams?
Here.
Zach Jeffrey?
Here.
Jennifer Madsen?
Here.
And we do have a quorum of approval of the minutes.
Make a motion for the minutes?
Yep, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Financial, September twenty twenty-two?
Make a motion?
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We do have a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll call the roll, please.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Hickman?
Yes.
Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jennifer Madsen?
Yes.
Uh, first of all, in general, we have Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh seven.
This is the resolution amending the budget to sort of reshuffle the ARPA money. That's been up for discussion before, but this is the money to reallocate. Uh, total, grant total of four hundred ninety-five thousand, or ninety-five thousand, three sixty-nine forty cents. But I'll read the title. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash oh seven. Resolution amending the city and rescue grant budgets for the purpose of claiming police salaries and employer payroll contribution.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash oh seven.
We do have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We do have a second discussion?
Yeah, this is, this is the money we were discussing about taking the, the federal leave money that we got and we could apply it towards the salaries, right?
Crystal.
That's what, okay. I'll just confirm a minute.
When you say apply it to the salaries?
Well.
Um, when these are the salaries, we capture our.
Right, it reimbursed through the salary. Okay, sounds good.
Any other discussion?
And that money is still being put aside?
Oh, yes, we have, yes.
We'll call the roll.
Well, I have, I have a question though. Is it, is it number seven?
Yes, because I love that same number that we had given it back in May when we first discussed it, so.
If you'd call the roll, please.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Hickman?
Yes.
Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jennifer Madsen?
Yes.
Well, uh, next we have Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen. Doug, wherever you're at. I'd entertain a motion.
It's, it's the selling of the, the old police vehicle.
I, I haven't seen the resolution.
Thirteen.
I, I knew we had addressed it last month and.
Uh, Barbara, I guess you did the resolution?
Um, actually Dustin did.
Okay.
Thirteen and fourteen is our companion resolution. Thirteen is the selling of the Impala with the debt service going to pay the dollar charge.
Yes, yes, that's correct, and this looks good.
I'll make a motion to get it on the table for discussion.
Motion.
To twenty-two dash thirteen resolution.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We do have a second. Discussion? There's not discussion? Do I?
You gotta read the caption.
You read it?
Resolution twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two dash thirteen, resolution authorizing the sale of two thousand fourteen Chevrolet Impala police vehicle.
Okay, we'll call the roll, please.
And, and Doug, I apologize to not get your coffee now. Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Hickman?
Yes.
Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jennifer Madsen?
Yes.
Next we have Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fourteen.
This one is the purchase, advanced purchase from Steve Landers Chrysler Dodge Jeep for the two Durangos, thirty-eight thousand, one hundred each, total of seventy-six thousand.
Yeah, it's, it's not actually a purchase at this point. It, it is a promissory to purchase to be delivered sometime in twenty twenty-three. They cannot even tell me what month they may be delivered in twenty-three. I mean, it, it could be anywhere from March to August, we just don't know.
So we're just authorizing for you to make?
Correct.
An authorization to purchase?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash fourteen?
We do have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We do have a second? Do you need to read the?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and read it, yeah. Resolution authorizing advanced purchase of police vehicles for two thousand twenty-three delivery.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call the roll.
I was gonna say, maybe, so this will show up, I guess, in two thousand twenty-three's budget and capital outlay as well as the outfitting of those vehicles. I'll put it in the two thousand twenty-three outline that we tend to say, oh, yes.
Call the roll.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Hickman?
Yes.
Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jennifer Madsen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next we have disposable of the old records. Crystal?
Um, as far as records, we have an old building in fact, it's literally called that. The records in it are not even new yet, if we did need them. Um, I guess it was a year and a half or two ago, I went out and moved everything that was newer than ten years old to our new building. Um, the old building has busted windows, there's burning and dead birds and, um, so those records are all, the only thing I have to keep forever is audits, I have those. Um, I've got ten years worth of payroll records, actually I've got more, I probably got fifteen. So, these records, um, the proper way to dispose is to have a council member present while they're destroyed. And we're not quite sure how we're gonna destroy them yet because I don't, Ryan, if you want to knock that over down and have it haul off or.
Well, we're gonna dig and tear it down. Um, I'm not very sure how much of the team we're keeping.
Yes.
Um, looking about.
It, it needs to come down.
So the only thing that's in the shed currently?
It's just old.
That you need to, that you need to keep by law is?
Oh, I have everything.
You already have that out?
I have that out in the new building.
So everything in it is, we can dispose of.
So there, there's no statute on those records that are remaining then? There's no?
No.
Well, it's, you have to make sure, whether we hire a shredding company to come in and do it, or like, we don't wanna wind up like the folks down in Florida and do all the patient records in the trash can industry. Let's not do that. But, well, I mean, I was thinking, like, paper shredder, burn it, I mean, burn it.
Yeah, when you burn it, we just have to find a way to separate the building and the record.
Make it a training day for the fire.
There you go. Burn van.
So we need a motion?
About how many boxes would you say there is? Oh, I'm sorry, I don't, we don't have a.
Yeah.
Motion to dispose of old records.
Probably get a little bit pricey if you shred them.
Motion to dispose of old records.
We do have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'm asking a question.
Well, we're trying to get an open, we have to, we're trying to second it so we can discuss it.
Okay, second a motion, make it.
Thank you.
Um, I was supposed to say, I was gonna suggest shredding it, but that's, that's pretty, pretty good bill.
It would be a hell of a habit. Um, really, but for anybody to even really go in there and touch those boxes, they've been really, uh, critters and elements and, yeah, they're not.
Well, wouldn't burning it be a?
They're not safe.
For hazard too?
Probably would, with probably Ashton.
Let's look at Ashton.
Those questions I don't know, yeah. I mean, I don't guess, I don't really know of any other way except for to hire someone to do it or, or burn it.
Well, I'm sure, I mean, shredding companies have their mobile sites where they cannot shred on site.
They shred in the trucks. They, the shredded company, we use them to work.
Yeah, but they'd have to get it out.
And they literally pull up and throw it all in a big tub and it grinds up everything.
Maybe they're used to that, maybe they just have had massed through companies that they.
But they do it all right, they will do it right here on site. They, once you call it off, they'll shred it in a big.
Yeah, but she's saying even going in there to get them out would be.
Yeah, it's dangerous, but I bet they, they've done that before. I can, I'll say, I can.
We can empty a form?
Yeah, I would.
Uh, we have a motion and a second?
Reinstate the motion, please.
We have a motion and a second to dispose of all the records.
Call, call the roll, please.
Will Elder?
Yes.
Stacey Dawson?
Yes.
Mark Hickman?
Yes.
Ryan Williams?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey?
Yes.
Jennifer Madsen?
Yes.
Volunteer, if we do need one council member who?
Yeah.
Who, anyone volunteer to do that.
I find out scheduling and that, one of us, I guess, can work that.
If you wanna do it one day during the week, I, if you'll, give me a shout, I'll come by.
I will. I'll let you get some questions and I'll let y'all know what I can upload and maybe do later.
Okay.
Okay. Any reports? Public comments?
I have a question I'd like to ask. Uh, come to my attention, there was fourteen thousand dollars worth of camera equipment that was purchased and completed and all that. Where are the cameras? Are they put up yet? What, what is the status with them?
Doug, if you wanna come up here and, you know, or worry out on that, it's completed.
If they were installed, I don't know when they were purchased, but they, they have been put up in the park. Uh, Mr. Hester had been put the poles up some time ago in the park when all that other work was being done and they were installed. I've got a key to the box, uh, for the control unit and they are operational.
When were they installed?
Last week.
Okay. So it looks like they were bought last year in October, from what I understand, and then it was paid for, the labor was paid for back in June around that area. And now we're just putting them in and I'm, that's concerning.
I can't speak to that, I have no idea about that.
I understand. But, uh, so it is, it is up and going. Do we have to spend any more money on that? Because we split, once again, we split those checks up to slide it under the city council radar.
Every, everything's done.
Was it bid out or anything else, Mr. Mayor?
No.
Okay, so it just?
It's done.
Okay, so it went to your buddy's pocket, and I want that to be on the record. Your band buddy went in his pocket instead of doing it the right way and letting that be bid out. It was slid up under the radar from the city council. It's against the law to do that. If you've got a project over a certain amount, it has to be bid. And it has to come for us or which we have to obey the law. And I, I, I'm bringing that up tonight because I want that to be very understood that I will be watching that. And it's also the, the budget that we're gonna be, we're getting ready to do. This budget we have here is very difficult for the best person in this room to understand. Matter of fact, I would probably suggest that probably nobody understands this in this room, okay? From the top to the bottom, probably nobody understands. I feel like there's a way that we can be transparent. I feel like we need to explore the ways, and I sent out emails to the council today, the ones I had your email addresses, of some ideas that we could do for the following year, that we could work toward as far as a, a transparent budget. And make the citizens, I, I plan to, I would like to work more toward having a, uh, open checkbook policy with the city. The citizens, because none of this should be hidden from the city council. It shouldn't be hidden from the citizens. It should be hidden from no one. This is their money that they pay in taxes and we owe it to them to be transparent. And I'm asking the city council to work with me on this and, uh, let's look into this and let's try to get to the bottom of it so we can be transparent and above board and serve our citizens correctly. Thank you.
Well, Mark, I appreciate you bringing that up. The, uh, the budget, making it under, more understandable. And I know that in our last budget meeting, we, last year, we did bring that up when there was a discussion about line items having some more definitions on what that is exactly. So a budget, a line item in the fire department, and I'm not picking on you chief, I'm just throwing one out. A line item in any department says two hundred fifty K for X, Y, Z. Well, that X, Y, Z actually is fifty other items. That's in that line item is what that's covering. So I mean, of course, would like to have more access to that myself to make better judgment and make better calls when it comes to budget time. Absolutely. And of course, having it online, you know, of course, that's in the future and we, everyone wants that for convenience, for sure. For everyone, even me. Like, if I wanna look up an ordinance, I gotta call Ms. Barbara. I'd love to get on the world wide web and just be able to pull it up.
That should be, that should be plain.
And it's the same thing with our monthly packets, I mean, all that stuff, that's down the road. But thank you for bringing up the, the clarification on the budget. I do concur with it. If it was presented to us in a different format, it would be easier for us and everyone in this room to understand.
Well, and, and just so everyone knows, I did file a complaint with the ethics commission. Uh, I did that for a reason. It's my job, it's our job to make sure that we follow the law appropriately. And if we're not following the law, we, we have to answer for it. And the, the auditors, when they come in and they see that there's no telling how long this has been going on, but this year, we've got, we've gotten things where, you know, the, the checks have been split up to go under the radar for, so we don't have to, so we don't get attention caught to it. That, in my opinion, needs to be a thing of the past. We're, we're, we're above that. As a city, the city deserves better. And when we ask the question and then the defiance is there that we really don't care, well, I do. And so, um, come to find out, I filed it on two individuals. Come to find out, one of them really didn't, he was told to do it. So it's my, it's my plan to, as long as I'm elected, that we're gonna follow the rules, we're gonna be legal, we're gonna follow the law at all times. And because the city is the one gonna get fined for it, we're the ones gonna get in trouble for it. And so the citizens, the people that just moved here, they're gonna get fined for it. I mean, I say they, they're gonna pay the price as well as everybody else. So I think that's important and I'd like to ask everybody in this room's, uh, support and let's making sure we are transparent above the law.
Well, I wanna make, I wanna make one point. If we, I was told by, by Dale, who does our finances, and it'll be all when it comes to our money, right? That if we get written up for any type of violations in our finances and stuff like that, it could potentially affect us negatively in the future as far as getting grants, getting assistance from the state. If we get written up for a financial thing. So this, this is a big deal. I concur. But moving forward, as long as we're trying to be as upfront and honest about everything, we shouldn't have this problem again. However, comma, it, this may not be over for us, is my point. It depends on what the auditor say, and I am, I am worried about it. But it is what it is and we're gonna have to move forward with what we got on our plate and let's hope it doesn't come back and bite us. And that's it.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, to address your point there.
Can you come up here?
My name is James Snyder. Um, addressing your point there, you might wanna get out in front of that with a PIP process improvement plan. Because if they do come at you with negative findings, they're gonna wanna PIP if you show that you've already got one. That can help reduce some of the negative impact that the city could, could have. Mr. Hickman, one hundred percent agree with you. Um, in twenty twenty-two, almost twenty-three, there is no reason why we should be doing stuff with chisel and stone. I mean, come on. But databases are, are simple, that they're not hard to manipulate. I do them every day as part of my job. That we can have all the transparency, that the tools exist and they're not expensive. Um, I mean, I, I know that I'm not the only person in this town who knows how to write SQL and can, and can manage a database. That would be willing to chip in to do that for the town so we don't have to pay some outside IT firm in order to do that. So I, I, I love that plan, uh, and I love your passion about being transparent because, yeah, it is gonna sneak up and it's gonna bite us in the tail if we don't get out ahead of it.
And thank you, thank you for saying those things. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
And I, I do know that, and Dale's not here to confirm any of our conversations, so I'm gonna not say his name anymore, but, um, he's been wonderful in trying to and he, I know he was, was working with the mayor to get ahead of it, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that, yeah, it's not like we just happen to, we're just ignoring it, or it's.
We did put some, some things in place. Um, we lowered the spending of the free spending ability, but the problem is, it's like, if we, if we're not aware of the money flow and knowing, you know, there's no telling how much money's been spent in this city, that we have no idea where it went or what, what it's for or anything like that. And so that we are putting things in place to, to soften that blow with the state auditors. Uh, we know that it's coming and, um, and it's, and it's a concern for me and I, thank you for listening.
Any other comments?
Actually, oh, go ahead, Ashley.
We were contacted by Verizon, about the fire station out at Easterwood. They'd like to place a two hundred and fifty foot, uh, Verizon cell phone tower out there. Uh, they need a eighty by eighty foot section. Uh, it's a collapsible tower on itself, there's no guide wires. They'll come in, do all the work, maintain the property. Uh, the reason I'm bringing it to you, uh, they will pay five hundred dollars a month for the next five years. Uh, it's six thousand a year. And after five years, they will increase ten percent and increase every five years up to twenty-five years. Uh, currently, we don't have, you know, a, a steady revenue coming in every month for the fire department. Most, most of our stuff comes in fire dues on your property tax towards the end of the year. Uh, it would be a income that comes in every month, at least five hundred dollars, kinda help on some operating fees, be extra six thousand in the budget. Uh, but they said they would maintain the property, put in a fence, maintain all liability on the tower. And it won't fall, a storm comes through, it won't fall a certain direction. It's built to collapse on itself, so it'll fall straight down. Just seeing if we can move forward with this, that's why I'm bringing it to y'all, if we could kinda talk to Verizon more on it.
Have you talked to Dustin about that?
Nope, they just called earlier.
I'd like to, I'd like to connect you with Dustin on that and, uh, and maybe check and see what the, actually the going rate on that is.
That's what my recommendation's gonna be, 'cause if it's their first offer.
I have a, I have a friend of mine who just bought some land up in North Arkansas, and they started out at one place and they ended up, and he is, he told me the other day, it's the biggest blessing ever, you know, one of the biggest blessings of him ever, so.
But it'd be guaranteed for the next, at least twenty-five years, so.
Yeah, but we need to look and make sure and what the, get with Dustin on that.
Top rates? Top rate.
That'd be grand for me, uh, personally, but I, I think we need to look.
Protocol with something like that, you'll have several things at the same time. They, we need to do a lease for them, they'll, they'll, let them write that up and they'll approve it. Uh, if the lease is the best way to go instead of selling them the parcel outright, um, we can do that. Um, and then, you know, we can just negotiate the terms of the lease at five hundred is their top line or whatever. Um, but you'll also need a site plan, a commercial.
They just, they wanted our approval, just so they could start looking more at it and not start looking at other places.
But then, then it'll be a commercial project, just like a site plan with the planning commission, that you may need a special use permit for it.
Was that, is that outside of our?
It's in the county.
Yeah, that's outside of our.
But it's on city-owned property.
Right, it's outside of our design zone, though, that model buffer.
It's in the water, it's, it's old water, so.
Oh, water treatment. Ashton, there's one right by my house, and when it was hit by an EA four, almost an EF five tornado, it literally just curled down around itself. It didn't cause any, I mean, something may have come off and went somewhere, but I have no idea, but it, that, it didn't cause any further damage.
I think this one's gonna be one of those red and blue ones, or red and white. I think this one's gonna be one of those red and blue ones or red and white ones that you see.
I want to know if Verizon knows anything about water sewage treatment plants, so we can swap out some of the works.
Yeah, but I just wanted to come to y'all.
Create a tower for a treatment plant.
See if we can get that so we can.
How much is it after five years, did you tell me?
They said they would increase up to, increase ten percent every five years for the next twenty-five years.
Those contracts are renegotiated, I think, at that point.
Yeah.
But I'd like to find out.
But it'd be a guaranteed revenue source.
I think they do. I've got a source that I can talk to.
I think you could, uh, you can just take a head nod vote for tonight and then you go back and just say, yep. Give them instructions to prepare a, a lease proposal and we'll look at it. You'll have them assembled.
So you need a motion? Should move forward on that? I mean, just a quick voice vote.
Quick voice vote?
With some, with some stipulation, with some instruction or just yes and no on?
You're authorizing him to continue discussions and ask them for a lease proposal.
I make a motion to what the city attorney does.
All right, thank you.
We do have a motion second. Only a favor, I. There we go. Next, we have, uh, city council. Y'all need to decide November the fifteenth or twenty-second or the twenty-ninth.
Mayor, I have one more point of business I want to bring up.
Yes, sir.
I was talking to Kyle with Saul earlier, because we needed to make a decision in this meeting about what proposal we sent on to ANRD for a grant proposal. Because that deadline is November fourth and I was talking to Kyle today and Kyle, Kyle's here tonight.
Kyle.
May want to step up and offer some.
You want to speak to that?
Where we're at, where we're at on this proposal, uh, situation, I know you sent that an email to the council a, a week or two ago. It seems ANRD hasn't been, uh, has been less than.
Right, we had the workshop.
Whenever we talked in our workshop earlier this month about sending in potentially two proposals to see which one may be funded, in a series of emails, they basically said, no, send in eight proposals, the way I.
Well, I mean, and you can't get a definitive answer. So, I mean, I understand where, you know, Zach had wanted to look at potentially the two options, see which could be hot, rank higher weeks back. And I actually brought, just in case, so I met, Zach had, uh, some questions, so I wanted to be here tonight in case there were more. So I brought this ranking criteria. Have you, have you all seen this? I'll give you copies of it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
We had, so we discussed three, three different options. There's two basic options in terms of infrastructure. One is the wastewater treatment plant and the other is the regionalization option with a home corporation. And the regionalization option, obviously, they, they pushed that because capturing the economy at scale and things, so they've actually awarded ten points, um, to that, as you see there on number four. Project will result in a regionalization or consolidation of a wastewater system. The other, the other points available for the wastewater treatment plant could be captured by both projects. And for that reason, we think the regionalization is probably gonna score ten points higher. There could be a little bit of leeway in there on the nutrients where they might not award all seven for the regionalization, maybe only part because you're pumping it to Conway for nutrient treatment, whereas the SPR would treat it on site. But you're still gonna net more points. So what we had asked ANRC was some feedback. Can you, is it okay if we submit two applications? Um, can you give us an idea if, you know, if that's good or bad or what do you want to see here? And I, and I, we had already sent them some correspondence earlier, um, in the year as well. But, um, so I forwarded you his comments and he, he wasn't available for a phone call, which I asked for, so. Based on his feedback, I think the best option, from his feedback, is to present only the regionalization option to see if it will get grant funding. And if it gets, you know, it's gonna cap it out at five million, so if you could get five million in grant funding, that's, that's gonna be the lowest cost alternative. If it gets partial grant funding, it's probably still the lowest cost alternative. If it got none, that's where we'd want to look at weighing that. Um, you still, you still would get a, um, a loan incentive, so it's one point five for thirty years versus one point seven five for twenty. And that almost makes up the difference. So it's almost like a break even at that point between the two. Uh, and so there's some other things to consider. But long story short, do you have any questions about that? We don't need a formal resolution. And, you know, the mayor can sign and, and we can send that in. It's not, you're not, you're not obligated to anything. At some point, if you do get an award, then you'll have to, I think it's by May thirty-first of next year, you'll have to have a plan in place to prove, here's how we're gonna fund the match. Uh, and I believe, I think I said this, are you on the twenty-five or the fifty percent match? I believe you're in the fifty percent. I can't remember. Maybe in twenty-five. Looked too many applications since then, but, uh, you're either in one of those. You'll have to, you know, pony up to fifty or the twenty-five percent for the remainder of the project cost. And then you'll have to have that in place by May thirty-first. The cheapest way to do that would be through an ANRC loan and we've submitted the, the original applications to start that process.
Which obviously in an eight or nine million dollar project, we're gonna have to find that funding before that point anyway.
Correct, yep.
So what specifically do you need from the city for the November fourth deadline?
Nothing. I, I don't need anything. We, we've got the, we've got the grant application ready.
For this, I know we weren't all able to make the, the workshop meeting, which is why I was thinking it was important that we all heard.
Yes.
So there were three options on the table, generally speaking, for the sewer plant fix. Uh, one was we, we upgrade and fix what we have and keep it in-house. Kyle backed me up on this. The other two options were very similar. Uh, they are essentially that instead of fixing our sewer plant, we install a pump station in place of our sewer plant. And instead of treating our own wastewater, we pump it to Conway Court. They treat our wastewater. They're essentially taking over the duties of our wastewater treatment.
Correct. And there are two, two variations of that.
There were two variations that I was.
One is a master meter, so that you pay them per thousand gallons to treat the wastewater. Um, and that's typically how it's done. However, that does not qualify for a regionalization project. So in order to qualify for the regionalization, in order to get the extra loan incentive and the grant funding, or the higher points for the grant funding app, then you would have to actually consolidate and, and then be under one umbrella. So that's where we had asked them for feedback. Can we submit both applications, the wastewater treatment plant and the regionalization option and, and then see how they rank? And from the feedback I got, he does not want to have to review two applications for the same problem. And you'll see in the chain, I don't, I don't know that he exactly understood. He said, he called them conflicting, uh, conflicting projects. And I responded, they're not conflicting, they're mutually exclusive, which is vastly different than conflicting, but, um, the end result appears to be he does not want to review more than one project for the same problem.
And I know we're down to deadline, but I would still like to push that question with him or someone else at ANRD in the next, in the coming days before the fourth. Because my, my point of view on this is, obviously, if there's a five million dollar check attached that, that takes over half of that, that rate increase off of our, off of our citizens, we've got to, otherwise, I mean, the rate increase on an eight million dollar bond is gonna be substantial. I think we figured out the numbers. It's, you're looking at over a hundred percent increase, I think, over what we are now. Um, this would absorb that. The other, what, what I've been mulling through my brain was if we could submit that project, one, of fixing our own and apply that five million towards that, we keep that local control of our sewer, if, if we, big if, if we could submit that and get the same money. That's what we don't know. They're acting like, they don't even want us to submit two different projects to wait.
Yeah, it, I think from, from my understanding of, of his response, it, it seems that he expects you to submit the project that ranks highest.
That's the way it sounds.
And that would be the regionalization project. And so.
He even said in his email, if you're not interested in, in regionalization with Conway Court, don't submit that project, is what he said.
Right. Whereas you, we, I mean, it's understandable that you're interested in both and that's the whole point. You're trying to figure out.
Cost effectiveness.
Yeah, I mean, how much are, how much are we willing to pay to lose control? Or how much are we not willing to pay? How much are we willing to save to lose control over our own treatment? Which I don't think you're gonna get an answer from ANRD regarding that before.
The deadline.
Unless you submit two applications and run the risk of them reviewing one first and then tossing the other one.
That's a big, that's a big prospect, uh, chance for me.
That's, I told Kyle earlier, I said, I'm not into five million dollar gambles.
No.
Uh, but if we could get a, if we could get a word from them, again, I've tried to reach out and couldn't get with ANRD, Kyle has as well. Tried to call the gentleman and not, but if we could get an answer where they would say, yes, we'll look at both and give you a, because they are mutually exclusive, I believe as well, that way we could weigh that option, uh, you know, to what's best for our citizens, what's best for our city.
Okay, I will reach out again and see if we can get some further clarification. I think they're intentionally vague on it. They just plan to review the applications and they're probably not willing to give a lot of pointers on the application. Um, and, and you see the application's fairly vague. They can kind of award the points. There's a ranking criteria, but there's not a lot of definitive, uh, line item on how they're gonna break that out. So exactly how they rank this is, is anyone's guess.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Do you have our email addresses, Kyle?
I do. Did everyone get, I think Barbara, you forwarded it?
Well, I just want to make sure you have it, because if anything does come up between now and the fourth and we need to take action as a council or whatever, like, I just want to make sure that we are keeping a lid on that, because like you said, that's a, a big gamble to make a decision on between now and the fourth.
I guess for now, we'll proceed as we were planning to, to submit the regionalization option and I will try to get some clarification.
To see if we can submit option one as well.
And if we can, then we'll let, I'll let the mayor know and, and send out an email to everybody and he can sign two and we can send him two.
Sounds great.
Sounds good. We need a, uh, date for November meeting? Fifteenth, twenty-second or twenty-ninth?
I will be out of town on the fifteenth.
Can we do it the twenty-ninth?
That's the Tuesday after Thanksgiving?
Yes.
I'll be out then.
I'll flip a coin.
Um, well.
Is everyone else available on those two dates?
Well, is everybody available on the twenty-second and the Tuesday before the council? I mean, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving?
During Thanksgiving week?
During Thanksgiving week?
I can be available.
You can't? Well, all right, let's throw out, how about, um, no, how, how about, um, Monday the twenty-eighth?
Works for me.
Monday the twenty-eighth.
Uh, wait, wait, wait. No, I'll be, I'm, I'll be out. If I'm the only ones out, y'all go ahead and.
Can we do it Wednesday the thirtieth? Will you be back on a Wednesday?
I'll be in South Dakota Monday through Friday. Monday after Thanksgiving through Friday.
You won't be here the week of Thanksgiving?
Or the week before.
By the week before?
It's deer season and Thanksgiving.
That's right. Let's just skip it.
Be in the woods for two weeks.
What if we had it, well, toward the first part of the.
I'll, I'll zoom in.
The first part of?
First part of November.
Can any, anybody do earlier in November?
Well, the eighth is election.
Yeah, and that's just real soon. Um.
It's like two weeks away.
Is Monday the fourteenth? You're good?
I can do the week of the fourteenth, that's great.
All right, week of the fourteenth?
I, I won't, I mean, that's, that's me. Whoa.
But you're gonna be out there?
I, that's when Polling meets.
Okay, well, okay, well.
What day do they meet on?
They, the, the, uh, the second Monday, Monday the fourteenth. Or we can do the fifteenth or the sixteenth or the seventeenth, it sounds like.
Somebody wouldn't be here November the fifteenth, though.
I thought that was Brian.
Brian.
Thought that was.
Give me your calendar. Let me see what you're talking about.
Sorry, chief. Sorry, chief.
Can we have it next Tuesday?
Take me now. I am removing myself from the scheduling discussion if I can make it on that. Ma'am?
No, 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 we need to.
Okay. I will be, I will be here the week of the fifteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth. I'll be here.
The week of the fourteenth?
I'll stay home, yeah, I'll, I'll go to the beer with that.
Fourteenth and fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
Fifteen?
Let's do fifteen.
Sounds good.
Fifteen going once.
Jimmy Joe?
Going once. We're going once, we're going twice. Done.
My apologies.
So it'll be the fifteenth of November at seven o'clock. Also, a planning commission is November the seventh. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Yes, sir.
That is, that is a project, I was wondering sometime that to build a sidewalk up eighty-nine. And I just wanted to see what the status of that is. I know that, I think you indicated that there was an eighty-twenty grant that we had qualified for. There'd been some money being put back for it. Uh, I had asked at least one council member about the status of that and they didn't know. Uh, with the changes that are coming January the first, I thought it'd be good just to get that out there as to what that status of that is.
Do have an engineer on it and, uh, that is Mike Watson. And also, uh, we do have a matching. Uh, the thing is, we're waiting for RDOT for, uh, right away.
So they've not given you any idea when that's gonna be approved or anything like that at all?
RDOT is not giving us any, any thumbs up for, yet, on it.
So all that information will be left January first for whoever takes your desk?
I'll, I'll make sure that they get it, the information.
Thank you.
But I entertain a motion for it. Yeah, Sam, I'm sorry. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Adjourn.